Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. First item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone wishing to address the council at this time? All right, seeing no one, we'll go ahead and have our declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey. We have four items listed. However, we do not need to have a closed session pursuant to item number three on the agenda. We need a closed session under item number two, which is existing litigation between Victorville and Robert W. Parker. The case number is listed on the agenda. That's pursuant to government code 54956.9A. We have real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8, and all of the parcel numbers and the properties are listed and set forth on the agenda. And then lastly, we have the need to go in on anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9B-3B pertaining to existing facts and circumstances on the property located at the corner of Roy Rogers Drive and Armigosa Road, and the facts and circumstances are set forth on the agenda. And to the extent there is reportable action, we will report it at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding seven o'clock meeting.
All right. At this time, we'll move into closed session. Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, will have any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McCaffrey. There were four closed session items on the agenda. We did not need to go into closed session on item number three with respect to items two, four, and five, which are fully described on the agenda. There is no reportable action.
All right. We'll now go into our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be led by Pastor Larry White from Horizon Church. Pledge of allegiance by Victorville Police Department Chief, Captain Don Yoder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you bow your hearts and heads with me as we come to the Lord in prayer? Lord, in an era of constant change, in fact, in a world of constant change and even a community that is in constant change, some changes, in fact, that we like and some that we're not so happy about. Lord, in a season of constant change, we also recognize that you never change. You are a never-changing God, always relevant but never-changing. In fact, your word confirms that to us in Hebrews 13 where it says that you are the same yesterday, today, and forever. And so I thank you, Lord, that in an ever-changing world, we can have faith and we can have confidence in your never-changing power, your never-changing love, your never-changing mercy, and your never-changing faithfulness. God, would you bless these proceedings tonight, and may your grace and your wisdom be upon the leaders of this community as they lead us through these constant and ever-changing times. In your name we pray. Amen.
Day that we'll be having here in, I think, just two days. I know it's on my agenda to be out there for 2012. And accepting this is Erica King and Mitch Tucker. Want to come on up? Each year, our nation takes a week, National Public Works Week, to celebrate the men and women of Public Works and all the great things that they do to make our communities a better place to live, work, and play. As a part of this celebration, we'd like to take a few minutes tonight to celebrate our very own Public Works Department. To participate in National Public Works Week, our city plans a Public Works Day event each year. This year, the 11th Annual Public Works Day will be on Thursday, June 7, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. At this event, 300 fourth graders from our Victor Elementary School District will meet our Public Works crews, visit 10 workstations, participate in a group team building activity, and learn how Public Works contributes to the quality of life in Victorville. This year's theme is creating a lasting impression, and that's exactly what our wonderful Public Works staff plans to do. So, on behalf of the City Council and the City of Victorville, I'd like to present this proclamation. You both. Well, it's going to be out at the park at SCLA, Schmidt Park, so, of course, open to the public, and we'd invite anybody else to come out there and see that, right? No? You don't want the public out there?
Just for the children.
Just for the children. Okay. Well, I...
I don't have so many yet.
Oh, okay. All right.
For your own.
Well, you guys do a great job every day, and thank you ever so much for everything that you do. Thank you. Let's give them another round. All right. We'll, at this time, have our city clerk present the agenda to the council.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. On the dais before the council is a revision to consent calendar item number 15F. It is additional information that has been received from Neil Prescott, and that is the only revision to that agenda.
Okay. Well, now move into public comment, and our first card, Caleb Castrenata.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk, I'm new to the area. I just moved here. We bought a home in February, and we started looking for a dog park nearby, and we noticed, well, Victorville doesn't have one. So we said, well, we'll go to Apple Valley, let's see what they got. They don't have one. Neither does Hesperia. As a matter of fact, there's not one up here. To go to a dog park, you have to go down the hill to Fontana or Rancho would be the closest ones. And so I called the Parks Department, and she told me, the woman there told me that there's not really any plans to construct one. So I started looking around and just kind of noticing the layout. Fontana has one. Corona has a dog park. Rancho, Claremont, and Chino each have two. Upland has three. And Riverside, which has a population basically around the same size as the High Desert, Riverside has five. And in the High Desert, we don't have any. So, there's lots of benefits. A well-socialized dog is actually much less aggressive. They're less noisy. But it's also not just about the dogs, it's about people. People have the opportunity to socialize with, sorry, I'm nervous. They have the opportunity to socialize with each other, and particularly shy people. Everybody loves pets, and so a wide cross-section of the population has a chance to come together and sort of bond. So it builds a really good, strong community. And because dogs, there's a space where dogs can go off-leash, dogs also, owners are less likely to take their dogs off-leash somewhere where it would be inappropriate. And finally, it helps to raise property values because it's something that's desirable. So, in light of all these, I'd like to request that the council consider building a dog park here in Victorville.
Thank you. Yvonne Mayshack?
Good evening, council members. I'm coming to you regarding special patrols for the Hook Park area and the vicinity. We have a lot of new people. I believe that there's even a transition house in the area. We've had a lot of burglaries, so I'm asking that we have special patrols through the park. The park is supposed to be closed at, I think it's dusk or something like that. Around 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, you can find shadowy figures in the park, and I'd like to add for special patrol. Also, while I'm honored by public safety, it's the library again. We need better lighting. And could you please think about using one of the old buildings that are empty to move our city library so that it would be more conducive to the people going out there? Thank you.
Kathy Mobley and Phyllis Wyatt?
My name is Kathy Mobley, and I'm with Route 66 Museum, and I'm here to let you know a little about our museum. We have 9,655 tours come in and 3,300 international that come from Spain, all the way to Japan, Russia, and also motorcycle people that come in and visit our museum. And we just would like you to be aware of it because a lot of people aren't aware of our museum. We are open from Thursday through Monday, closed Tuesday and Wednesday, appointments only. And we're also having a mural, and we're halfway there, and we need sponsors for it. And it's $10,000 that we need for this mural. And Phyllis, would you like to say anything?
I'm short. The mural she's referring to is going to cover the whole south side of the building of the museum down on D Street. You're probably familiar with what we're talking about. And we're about halfway there on our funds to finish the mural from donations for nonprofit. And so we're hoping that we can get more sponsors to finish that mural. It'll be a big plus for the town of Victorville for the building and the looks of it. And the number of people she talked about, that is just in one year. We had almost 10,000 visitors through the museum, and one-third of those came from all over the world, different countries. And it's quite an amazing thing to see those people come in our little museum and be so impressed. And we also are always looking for volunteers to help us at the museum, always. We need them desperately to come volunteer because we have no money to pay you, and it's quite a treat to be able to do that. So we thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Mueller?
Good evening, Mayor. My name's Dave Mueller. I'm with highdesertpolitics.org. I'm going to do a story for these ladies here and put a plug in to hopefully let people know that read my site about the donations they need. You know, the reason I came this evening is I wanted to speak to you about this campaign, you know, today's election day. And I don't know about anybody else, but I'm really glad that it's over with because just Saturday alone, I received 16 glossy mailers from all the prospective candidates. And if you took all the money that was blown by all these candidates and gave even a small fraction of that, that mural wouldn't even, they wouldn't even need to ask for donations. But I'm going to keep this short because I know that there's parties to go to and you all want to get to them. But I wanted to ask why, Mayor, why the other council members that supposedly supported you didn't support you through the FEC, it doesn't record any donations from them except for Councilman Kennedy and a couple other people. And I was shocked by that, to be honest with you, because I would have thought that Buck John's council member, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Cabralas and Councilman Rothschild would have actually ponied up and supported you. But I see from the FEC filings that you loaned yourself $150,000 to send those mailers out. And to me, they kind of put you out in the spotlight and then left you hanging because I think that there were some promises made that they would support you for your run for Congress. So I just want you to kind of roll that around in your head. And then I just want you to know that those mailers you sent me, I have birds, and I have a birdcage, and they all went in the bottom of my birdcage. They're excellent liners for my birdcage. Thank you very much.
Just a quick comment, by the way. When you see Mr. McCaffrey's finals, I've already put in 300 into his campaign. I hope he'll get through tonight, and I will be putting some more in after that. So, these reports come in when they come in.
All right. We'll now move on to the Library Board of Trustees. We have the consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Cabralas, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
For the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, this is agenda item number nine. This is a request to award a contract to PCI for SCLA Airport Runway Rubber Removal and Repainting in the amount of $82,054. And Stern Dahl Enterprises, Inc. for grinding, preparation, and painting of additional runway areas in the amount of $88,585.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, before taking action, I'd like to modify the recommendation to provide a ward only for the first part of the bid, the rubber removal and repainting, which basically involves runway 1-7 and runway 2-1. And we will bring back separately the Stern Dahl Enterprises scope, which includes grinding prep. So effectively, I'm asking you tonight to award only the first component to PCI in the order of $82,054.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for only the first part of this request.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Cabralas, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda item number 10, under the successor agency to the RDA, is a request for approval property transfer pursuant to affordable housing agreement with AmCal Hillcrest Court Fund LP for Neighborhood Stabilization Program, NSP, project of 67 rehabilitated units, APN 0395-137-3015430 Libra Road, Victorville, and authorize the execution of transfer documents by the Assistant City Manager. This is not a public hearing, but I do have a card on this. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you again, Mayor, Council. Again, my name's Dave Mueller. I'm with highdesertpolitics.org. I've already written and posted a story on this topic, and I just want you all to know that, once again, if you guys say you're conservative, then Nancy Pelosi should be on this council with you. This project, I went through the documents all the way back to 2009. Basically, in a nutshell, the city spent a couple of million dollars to buy the property. It was, according to Sun Country Builders, the contractor that rehabbed the project, it had five tenants when they got it out of 67. The rest were all boarded up. And so the property was completely demolished. Now, I understand that NSP funds, that's what it's for, is to eliminate blight, but the total amount spent was over almost $10 million to rehab that property, the total contract. Now, tonight, you're going to just turn that over to AmCal. AmCal was paid a developer fee of $700,000 to do this, but they've got nothing into it except the management agreement afterwards and the tax credits, federal and state, that they get. So this is a boondoggle from the word "go." And now the town of Apple Valley, through Joe Brady, is going to build another AmCal project, except ours is going to be brand-new. It's a 50-unit place. Guess how much it costs? $9 million. So you guys spent all this money rehabbing something that, according to Sun Country Builders, was so bad that they had to reinforce the footings, put steel inside the walls, add shearwall, change all the windows. They said they did all this work, but I'd like to see a forensic audit of that job because I think, I think millions of dollars got carried out the back door on this. And to me, you guys should be ashamed of doing these kind of deals. What did this benefit the people of Victorville? Because, as I said, it's a four-year deal. You spent nearly $10 million, federal money, NSP, which came through the county and through your own RDA agency. And what's happening with it? What's Victorville get? The residents? Nothing, except the 67-unit low-to-moderate-income housing. But I don't see how this benefited the people of Victorville. And I'm complaining the same in Apple Valley. We don't need a senior housing, affordable housing unit. We've got 1,000 houses that are foreclosed over there. But again, it's money coming out the back door through special buddies, AmCal, which did nothing. They're going to get this flip to them. And I just think it's outrageous. You should not be doing these kind of projects. Am I boring you, Councilman? I'm sorry. I see you yawning over there.
You clearly don't understand what their 20% set-aside money represents in the legal...
I understand it completely.
Never mind. I'm not going to explain to you 15 times over what we've tried to do. Many times when you brought up these issues...
Why don't you have your legal counsel ask whether or not it's constitutional to even force the people to buy housing for other people? It's never been challenged. Why don't you do something nationwide setting and say, "We're going to challenge this. We don't think it's constitutional"?
All right. This is a companion item to agenda item number 14 under the City Council, so I'll entertain them.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I have a little illustration for you. If we can put up the presentation or PowerPoint, I have some slides to kind of share with you, and it might speak to one of the questions that I think Mr. Mueller was asking, and that was with respect to what did you get out of this. But altogether, I think to simplify what it is you're proving tonight is resulting, of course, from the Redevelopment Agency dissolution that you're all familiar with. Now, all assets that have been held in the RDA's name have been subjected to liquidation, and it's actually put a freeze on projects like this one that has been literally in the middle of a transaction. In fact, this project, while it was nearly three years, maybe four years in total in the works, timeframe elapsing, this project was actually held in escrow, and escrow was not allowed to close because of the RDA dissolution. So effectively, what you're being asked for tonight is to authorize the transfer to occur as a successor agency. And then still, this requires concurrence from the Redevelopment Agency Oversight Board. Once that concurrence is given, then effectively, escrow entitled, in fact, feel comfortable in allowing for the transfer to occur, which is a transfer that's been already agreed pursuant to an affordable housing agreement that I believe was originally approved back in November of 2010. But this project altogether was a result of having been awarded two forms of NSP grant money. The underlying dirt was acquired several years ago, I believe it was in November of 2008, when the underlying property was acquired, which included a very dilapidated and blighted apartment community, both physically, economically, and socially. Speaking to the social, and I think this is what you get out of the project in the long term, is that this has been a project that has been traditionally perceived and recognized with crime, with drug activity, a lot of criminal activity, and including gang activity. Having grown up in this town, I can actually remember some of those perceptions as we rode the bus past this property on the way to school. So it's been in a deplorable condition for so long. And one of the opportunities that we saw with the NSP grant program, consistent with its overall goals, was to buy up foreclosed properties that were negatively impacting communities. And this was in response to the national crisis that was out there with respect to the foreclosure of a lot of properties. These monies were used to buy the property. We knew originally that buying the property, the grant funds that we had under the first round of NSP wasn't adequate to take on the larger project, which was to rehabilitate it. So we did identify a couple of sources, and the one funding source that came through for us significantly was partnering with the County of San Bernardino, their housing division, utilizing and leveraging their NSP dollars to actually do the vertical element, and that was to take this community down to the studs and rehabilitate it. So it was a partnership effort, and I think what we have today is something that's certainly much more respectable, and certainly, we haven't seen the criminal activity that was once there. In fact, one story I remember specifically, and it did require a strong partnership with code enforcement and the police department. During the course of construction, we had safety issues. Our construction workers were concerned because they continued to get threatened. And what we did realize during the process was that we were going into somebody else's community because of the gang activity in this environment. This was not our property, even though we owned it. This was technically that criminal element's property. So we had actually partnered with the PD, and the PD helped us conduct a sting. So we had actually partnered with the PD, and the PD helped us conduct a sting to try to eliminate. So there was a lot of arrest during the course of the construction of this project. So we think, despite the dissolution, this is what redevelopment has been about, and before taking this to the Oversight Board, we did think it would be appropriate to at least share with you what has transpired, the before and after, more or less. So what I have for you is some illustrations that I wanted to share, and what you have here is the carport system, and certainly I think you can see some dramatic difference in just adding some architectural amenity, certainly different color, just making it look neater, cleaning up the eve lines and getting rid of things like the satellite dishes. One significant issue that we did run into throughout this property was soils issues, and we did have some changes during the course of construction. And there were certainly additions over the course of the 30-plus years that this community has been in place, to where additions were done without permits, so we found a lot of things, a lot of things that certainly weren't stable and habitable. So a lot of new reinforcing actually had to go into these storage units. This is an illustration of what it looked like beforehand, just the physical conditions. Brandon, do you mind? Had a pole element, certainly wasn't being used, in fact, it was actually much dirtier than this when we walked the property the first time out there. This is an after illustration to give you a sense of some of what the property looks like today. And certainly you can see improvement with the wrought iron features. Landscaping is not yet in place, and that'll be a common theme where it's, where it's still got to mature a little bit. Palm trees were an added feature. Brandon, next slide, please. Totlot is a feature that the property didn't have before, that we did introduce to make it a little bit more recreational and family-feeling. Here's another illustration. Top left is the before illustration, bottom right is current, and unfortunately, when we took the photo, the landscaping wasn't fully in, but you can certainly see the difference in feel. Here's an example of some of what we encountered going into the units. It was actually pretty depressing when we walked through this property originally. When we acquired the property, we acquired the property where 12 of the 60-some-odd units were occupied. By the time we got done with, or got started with the construction, we actually managed this property through attrition, and we still had four units occupied, so we worked with those residents and moved them around the construction to, so that we didn't have to displace them. Those are tenants that are still in place today. Another illustration of before and after. Bathroom features, I'm just, it was really, it was really sad to see that people actually lived in these conditions. And these are some of the final features as to what the property looks like today. So I think most importantly, before we move this project along and effectively transfer it to Amcal, who will become the owner and the operator, the managing entity, we do have, as a function of the agreement that we've entered into, we also have covenants to ensure long-term management and maintenance of this property. So we do have the teeth, long-term, to go back in if there are problems, to rectify them a lot easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralas, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
All right, there were no items at time of posting for the Joint Powers Financing Authority. Moving on to the Victorville Water District, we do have the Consent Calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralas. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 12, this is a request to authorize the purchase of telemetry mesh system standardized components and amount not to exceed $145,600, including a 10% contingency.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralas. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 13, this is a request to, one, award a contract to KNC Construction, Inc. of Apple Valley, California, for the rehabilitation of NSP property located at 13356 Baylor Drive in the amount of $39,060. And, two, designate the Assistant City Manager as the authorized signer of all related transaction documents.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralas. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 14's already been dealt with, so we'll move on to City Council Agenda and Consent Calendar. Agenda Item Number 15.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralas, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 16 is a request to adopt Resolution Number 12-034, entitled, "A Resolution on the City Council of the City of Victorville Approving the Issuance by the California Statewide Communities Development Authority of Multi-Family Housing Revenue Bonds for the Rancho Seneca Formerly Known as Desert Springs Apartments."
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralas. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 17 is a request to, one, approve and adopt the analysis of impediments for fair housing choice and as presented for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorize the City Manager to execute all necessary documents for submittal to HUD.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralas, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Agenda Item Number 18 is a request to approve estimated annual expenditures not to exceed $28,000 during fiscal year 2001-2012, and $33,000 for fiscal year 2012-2013 for meter reading and data management services provided by Trimark Associates, Inc.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Mayor Protem Cabralas. Motion carries with Councilmembers Kennedy and Vias absent.
Right, Agenda Item Number 19 is Council Committee Reports. This deals with committees that you may sit on as a result of being on our council.
I have none.
Yeah?
None.
I have none as well. We'll move on to council reports, discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming City Council Agenda.
I have none.
I have none as well. Reports from staff and council members, Ms. Robertson?
Only to say that I agree with Mr. Mueller, I too am glad that the election is over today.
Anything from Mr. Metzler?
I'm going to bite my tongue and say this, too. Philosophically, I agree where you're coming from, Mr. Mueller. If you'd come up and asked a question instead of come up with accusations, things could be clarified a lot easier. Philosophically, your point is well-taken, but there is that thing hanging out in Sacramento that until they get their game and act in the game, we have to play by their rules, or we have serious financial burdens on us if we don't. We can't have the luxury of doing those things any other way, and we're doing a good job this way.
All right, and with that, I have nothing else to add, so we are adjourned.